Welcome. Good evening. Tonight is the Town of Rutland Office of Select Board Regular Meeting for Monday, March 9th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. We are here in the Rutland Free Public Library in the Cable Room on the lower level. As per usual, these meetings are being recorded for transmission on Rutland Public Access Television and on YouTube for anyone who is interested. Hereby call this meeting to order, and could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Aye.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We will jump right in. We have Treasury Warrant 18 and Payroll.
Motion to sign Treasury Warrant 18 and Payroll.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. And we have one set of minutes.
I have to abstain.
I was half absent. At 6:30, remember?
Yep. Is that, uh...
And then Wayne would have to abstain too. Can we... I mean, can we just not approve the minutes then?
No, um...
Oh, you had a quorum, right, to the end of the meeting?
No. Well...
Here it says Wayne was in at 6:01.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you were here.
I wasn't here.
Alright.
She wasn't.
Okay.
I left at 6:40.
You left at 6:40. I think we're good.
Alright, so I'll move that we approve the minutes from February 24th, 2020.
Um, Mitch, are you comfortable second?
Uh, second, sorry.
Thank you. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Abstain.
You want me to abstain?
Uh, your call doesn't... It's not necessary, your vote.
Aye.
Alright, we are going to move on to Roman numeral five, going straight into the Ad hoc Bylaw Committee. Welcome Peter Crane, who's ready. He sat by mistake. I'm so sorry.
Alright, no, no, actually I had to bring it back because it just started the screen.
Ah.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Peter Crane, Chair of the Ad hoc Bylaw Committee. We were asked to come and discuss what we plan to do for this year's annual Town Meeting for Bylaws. This is in relation to our ongoing codification and modernization effort of the entire body of bylaws. You have in your packet now what I'm going to show on the screen. This is our fancy new title page. Ooh! But I really just printed off a table of contents for you to see what our intent is. We have five chapters that we have done a first complete pass of. We expect to finish the second pass, second review pass, have them reviewed through appropriate groups, through legal, and through public meetings about them for annual Town Meeting. These are the five chapters: General Provisions, General Government, Financial and Legal Affairs, Boards, Committees, Commissions, and Councils, also just called multi-member bodies, and Public and Private Ways. The two chapters we won't get to are Natural Resources and the Patchall Other Matters. I see you getting ready to ask a question.
I have lots of questions.
Feel free.
Um, you said codification. Is the assumption that everything we are looking at non-content-change-related?
No. There will be significant content changes to some of the bylaws.
Can at some point we get clarification as to which ones specifically those will be prior to...
The biggest ones are General Provisions, the repeal of noncriminal disposition, Town Meeting Select Board, Town Administrator, which is brand-new, Finance Committee. I believe the other ones are fundamentally minor changes. In fact, some won't even be changed at all because they were just passed. The Earthworks Board was just updated at the last Town Meeting. Bylaw Committee was passed at last year's annual, so those won't change at all, I expect.
You expect?
I expect. I mean, we've been through them once. I don't believe we had any changes. We put all the changes into the Earthworks Board at our first pass-through, and we did them again before. We did our second pass before the last Town Meeting.
And I think when you say you expect, I would imagine that is leaving room for a legal review and changes that might need to be tweaked at that point that are going to be minor, right?
Exactly. And as we meet with the Boards and Committees and Commissions and Departments that are affected by these, they are on... I expect to have other input that could change things. Do I think that they will change so much that we would not put it forth? No, but I will leave room for it.
So your request, well, your preliminary notification of an upcoming request tonight is that all of this would be put on the warrant for the annual Town Meeting?
Correct. The... One of the questions that you folks need to figure out is how many warrant articles is this? Previous, um... Well, in 1941, when the body of bylaws was passed, it was a single article warrant. This is a significantly larger body of bylaws. It has been suggested that it might be easier and might look less like we're trying to hide things if there were one article per chapter, for example.
I've actually heard from numerous folks that, um, did ask questions about this process.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that's a good idea if we think that as a board. I would also ask maybe perhaps if the board seems it appropriate to ask Mike into looking at other communities that have recently gone through this process to see how those were structured, um, to make it digestible for... I mean, there's a lot of information.
Yes.
Um, and we want to make it as clearly defined, but also digestible for folks that come to Town Meeting. Um, so I just want to make sure that process is done as transparently as possible.
I agree. And that's one of the reasons that, starting in early April, the committee plans to begin holding public meetings about everything that's going on. We're trying to be as transparent as we can be, once we get through the right level of review, so that the public can see it in advance as well.
Great.
So that was definitely my next question. Is there a schedule that might be made available for these public meetings?
We don't have a firm schedule. Uh, we are starting... Our best guess right now is going to start early April, probably the first week in April, and I would bet that that's going to be Chapters 1 and 2. And then we'll do one of the... Each of the big... Each of the following chapters are significantly larger, so I would probably do no more than one per meeting.
So that's four weeks. You have about five, based on what you just said, until Town Meeting it, you know, begins. Would you then take the fifth meeting for situations where you had a lot of questions to the point that you foresee having to make changes to the bylaws prior to Town Meeting?
That's always a possibility. I mean, again, I do expect to hear changes from other people. I mean, with so many... One... Another question for you folks is when do you want to go over your bylaw? That's one of the ones that I've mentioned is, has significant changes to it. Now, I don't think that they're so broad and so big that you're going to have to wrap your heads around it. It's not that complex, but there's a great deal more detail in the new version than there is. And at the same time, I would think you would also want to review the Town Administrator bylaw, which is all brandy-spanking-new.
So, next meeting? Can we take a first read?
Absolutely.
Can we also... Mike, could you perhaps pull some examples from surrounding communities that have a similar structure that we do that have already fleshed this out? I know that's probably what you're basing a lot of your work on, but I just want to, just so we can take a look and conceptualize.
Yeah, absolutely.
So Peter, devil's advocate, Anita's here too. This is a...
And Karen.
And Karen. Thank you, Karen. This is a lot for a Town Meeting. Obviously, we know of multiple communities that hold multi-day Town Meetings. We've never done that. We've had some long ones, right, but we've never done that in the past. Is this a candidate for something different?
I mean, I think that would, before you respond, I think that would be disastrously attended.
What do you mean, disastrously over-attended or under?
No, no, no. Under a multi-day... I might not even attend, but, um, that, uh, I feel like folks would have a hard time justifying a multi-day commitment.
I think one of the big questions is, uh, how contentious is this year's annual... Do you think it's going to be? Now, let me guess, you... The only things you really know about are the school budget, the town budget, which are going to have their some level of discussion. They always do. But I don't know what else is going to be on the warrant this year.
Obviously, it's not going to be like last year's, I would imagine, with the growth bylaw. We haven't had discussions of anything that would be that polarizing.
No, I got something. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
Well, I know that there... I have talked to Dave George, and he said that he's likely to put one or two zoning amendment bylaws on as well. Again, I don't know how controversial they're going to be considered. I haven't seen the tech. I don't know enough to comment other than to say that I've heard.
Yeah. We haven't heard anything about that from the Planning Board or anybody else.
So, Karen and Anita, you attend every meeting, certainly. Do you believe this is a pill that is swallowable? That's a weird phrase, but, um, at a normal Town Meeting, where as we know, the budget sometimes takes up a lot of oxygen in the room. And to Peter's point, at this point, we are operating in the red as we move through the budget process. We're not looking at an easy, you know, just sort of, okay, we can pay for everything cycle. But in terms of length, you know, and to Mitch's point, when people see us placing a warrant that has, you know, at that point, you're looking at 40-plus articles, including all of our regular ones, that's a lot.
It is a lot. It can also be considered for its own special. It could weather, and not unnecessarily even mean in May.
Right.
Actually...
I think if we started the process in May, and then, I think at one of our meetings we talked about, and then whatever we didn't think we could get through then, not have a meeting during the summertime, but maybe have a special meeting in September, that everyone that's there in May now has been forewarned that there's going to be a special just to finish up, and by then, the rest of the bylaws should be done.
So, am I reading this right, hearing this right? So place everything with a goal towards closing the meeting. Moderators obviously call at X PM adjourned to the following? That we wouldn't have a closed meeting. We'd have to, we'd have to take no action...
Have to have a separate...
Right. I would suggest at that point, we would take no action, or perhaps adjourn... Post, now you have to do it to a time certain. No, you don't. You can lay it on the table.
Can table it.
You can table.
You can just lay it on the table to be voted on in the future meeting.
That is true.
We could really get people to the public sessions, then, I think, but realistically, that's probably not going to happen.
You know, information sessions are generally sparsely attended, but we'll do our best to make it.
How are we getting the word out, the information sessions? Because some of these, some of these topics have very narrow windows of interest from members in the public. But we also want to make sure that those are the individuals that are engaged, because it'll impact whether it's their livelihood or how they conduct business. Is there a method to getting a hold of those folks, reaching out to them?
Our normal approach of Town Meeting blast, something on the website, something on the TV that says, "On this state, we're going to have a meeting to discuss these bylaws."
And I think we talked about Wednesday nights, right?
Yes, we're actually... Wednesday night is our only free night during the week. It's going to be, they're going to be a series of Wednesday nights, and they're likely to be in this room because the other two rooms are booked too much.
Yep.
Okay.
Is there a...
Yes, Sean Moore, 3 Edson Avenue. Do you have to do all of them at this meeting? Or can you do from, for, for May, then some for the one in the fall?
Well, we...
But this is only part.
Yeah, we're not... This, you'll notice that this section labeled Regulations, which is after all the bylaws, is on page 65. With every single bylaw in place, that's 129. We're only at half the pages.
Alright. And signs are not included.
That's it. And there are some bad ones. Signs, animal control, um...
That are going to be behind that.
Oh, God, Earth removal is such a mess. There are two or three more that are just, maybe three, tongue-in-the-word to go through.
Does the state have a timeframe for when this is due?
Okay. Just, no, no, no. This is, this is our work.
This is proactive.
To be done.
Okay.
Karen Norwalk, 149 Palma Gussett Road. Um, I know my Finance Committee bylaw has not been approved by the Finance Committee. Um, I know that it's not on for this week's meeting, so therefore, I'm wondering how we're going to get them approved by the Boards, and then approved by the public, and then get them to legal in time so that we can get them onto the Town Meeting floor, not saying, "Well, we think this is how it's going to be."
Yeah, that's another concern, is legal review can take quite a amount of time.
Well, I don't expect to get public approval other than at Town Meeting. That's their approval. Information Sessions, we take feedback, but they'll go to legal review before they go to public, just because of the time it takes to get everything done.
Okay, but so to Karen's point, which really highlights, I would guess now, the need for us to make every single breakout, every article, its own article, on Town Meeting, because you're going to have FinCom sitting at the top table, giving an opinion on whether or not they are in favor or not, and they may well have issues with one section under a chapter and not another. So, uh, without confusing people entirely, I think we would have to take them separately, and that's, that's a lot. Hmm.
Two, three, and seven is 12, 12 and eight are 20, eight and... Sorry, 20, that's 26 articles right there.
26. Okay.
About the 26 or so that we put on every year.
Right. Yeah, we're looking at 50-plus. Yeah, good.
Well, we could always narrow it down too. I mean, whichever the ones we think. I mean, we're going to go in order, but not to do all of those. Looking at this at an angle and trying to remember which one's which, but say you took the first...
Well, that's why I was suggesting chapters, as an intermediate approach rather than every single article.
Right.
Right.
Except, Chapter 1's a particularly interesting case, just because it has a repeal as well as an amendment. So that may itself suggest...
I think we need, we need some clarity. I think we need to see our, obviously, we talked about our bylaw, but also, I would urge the group to get those public meetings set up as soon as possible in terms of locking down firm dates. Um, this is a lot to wrap our heads around, and I'd like to see how other communities have handled bringing a document this size to Town Meeting, if there's some way that we can streamline the process or get feedback more efficiently. What does everyone think about?
I want to see the draft. I want to see the draft and the highlight of changes and what we're looking at here.
I mean, there's a whole level of review, right, that, as you're noting, hasn't happened yet. But if we're going to jump to Town Meeting with the assumption that there has been some level of review, all level of review, legal review, they're done. FinCom will have an opinion about each one at the meeting. People are...
Well, we haven't approved ours yet.
Right.
We've been waiting for them to come back with what we suggested, so...
So you have a lot of work to do. So where I'm headed is, as we know, people get tired, you know, at Town Meeting. It's a long night. It's a very data-heavy night. What can we expect of the back and forth at Town Meeting? Is it going to be a very easy sort of, we're tired, all in favor, I, and Randy start zipping through them? Or are there going to be, rightly, and well within their right to do so, a lot of questions and motions from the floor to a ment? In which case...
And I love those amendments.
Right, and we know, that's your favorite.
And I think the latter is somewhat healthy too, because it looks like engagement from the community's perspective.
Absolutely. Okay, so it sounds like we need an exit strategy. If we were to hypothetically put these all on as individual articles, kind of under some sort of conscious knowledge that we might not get through them, our exit strategy, I think, needs to be clear. We can't, yeah, we can't pick and choose. Um...
I guess, could you provide a written timeline as to how you envision this going forward from now until Town Meeting, that we can take a look at and be able to either make suggestions or help in any way we can? Is that reasonable?
Uh, the other thing the Board will need to consider is where to place these. Typically, bylaw changes have gone at the end, um, right, wrong, or indifferent, because we do try to get all that budget stuff out of the way. Um, in many cases, it's the reason why some people are there.
I want to see this at the beginning, so that people have to be engaged, right before the school budget. That's where I want to see it.
Yeah, to your, to your point, though, then they text each other and come late. So in terms of attendance, there's that sweet spot where, I don't know.
Is there anything wrong with having so much at the Town Meeting and then a special meeting in, say, June to continue and just have the meeting be...
I think the issue is the cost associated with... I mean, there's going to be a cost associated with it, and I think when you look at summertime, you're looking at people...
Well, it would have to be, you take criticism if you do it when school's not in session, but...
Right, right.
Well, it's when school feels out.
But if we did one in the middle of the month, then the cost is, it's not that great for us.
Even lower if it's on a... School night.
Uh, so Anita, turnout-wise, you know, Mitch brought this up. So a fall Town Meeting that's sort of, yeah, poorly attended, we're looking at 60-ish people, um, and that's in some cases lately to spend up to a million dollars in free cash. We've had some important articles, things that we've had to put off. This case, very dry, all data, all the time. What is our quorum requirement?
10.
Well, if that passes, it's 30.
That's right. One of the amendments is raising it to 30.
We'll leave that till the end, then, yes. My other question, then, I think what might actually be helpful is in a document this size, if, if we, if it's possible, this is just me asking if it's possible, if there is a cheat sheet as to what items changed substantially and what those changes were, so that people could use that as a reference guide, so that people aren't bogged down with...
I do plan to do that specifically because Sheila, I remember your reaction when the Earthworks Board change came up. It's like, oh my God, look at all these changes. We can't really consider it, and it took somebody to say, "No, no, here's the substantive change." I mean, granted that somebody was me, but that's, that's what you need, because we are changing so many words. Some of them are changing structurally, so there are a lot of movement. So if you look at the change bars, it's awful, and you do need somebody to write down...
If we had something like that, it might be possible to package these into a smaller number of warrant articles, because people are just interested in things that are either substantively changed or that are going to be changing from what's normally been conducted.
I worry about packaging them at all and risk having one item that's packaged that's a little bit questionable, for whatever reason, that then fails everything in that package, because...
It's like a...
A misplaced comma, you know what I mean? Like, that's my only, as much as I hate to break it out and have it be 26, I think that that's honestly our best, like, most transparent.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, so to your sidebar, changes, most likely the, this is just my opinion, the clearest option for our residents who are walking in, and in some cases will be seeing it for the first time, because they didn't go to your information sessions, are before and after. Not stets, not edits, not a typical way of doing things, but an honest-to-God before and after. Page divided down, the center.
Uh, I think that still won't be as clear as you would like.
Yeah, because some of this doesn't even exist yet. I mean, it's kind of...
Well, a lot of it hasn't been touched since 1941, so it looks, it fundamentally looks different.
I know, but...
They're all going to flow differently.
Yeah.
So...
Okay.
But I think that...
I agree with you. I'm sorry. I agree with you.
I was just going to say, I think that that, Sheila's way at least, gives some people that want to put the time in, on the floor there, to be able to read through and their interpretation of before and their interpretation of after, and maybe also then have a cheat sheet of this is the fundamental change, but kind of offer all three. And I know it's a ton of extra work, and I, I think that there's a large, just knowing our attendance at Town Meeting, I think there's a large population might not come to those information meetings, but would very much like to see an untouched before and an untouched after, and be able to make their own...
I think to that point, to move this ball forward, I think if it's agreeable with the Board, what I would then suggest, because we are a little bit of a ways, so I think if you come, if you can, come to our next meeting with timeline, with those public hearings scheduled, with maybe that reference sheet.
Public meetings.
Public meetings.
Not hearings.
Hearings. Not hearings. Public meetings. With, um, that cheat sheet as to this is what has substantially changed, and then a process that you would like to see followed. And if Mike can pull kind of the best practice information, we can then make a decision of, as to how to best put this forward, if that sounds like a reasonable plan.
And he's also bringing our two articles, which are 1 and 2.
Yep.
Three, no, 2 and 3. Um, okay.
Does that sound, sound good? Peter, is that doable?
That's absolutely doable.
It's absolutely doable.
Absolutely.
It's going to be fine. Okay.
I've got two whole weeks.
Yeah. Uh, Peter, none, these are all civil majority?
Yes.
On this page?
Yes.
Okay. All general, right.
That's a zoning, not a general.
Yeah, right.
Zoning are two-thirds. You're right, but we don't, we don't have authority over zoning bylaw. We don't, then it doesn't exist.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. I know you guys have put a ton of time and effort into it, and it's, we're asking you to do even more, and sorry. But thank you.
I would also like to point out something that's hidden. It's actually right here at the bottom of the page. Anita and I have talked before, and we're trying to make it happen, where the regulations of the Town are also formally published with the bylaws. So, I mean, right now, I have three, the motorboats and lake ponds and rivers, which was repealed by the state in 1960. There's a story about that. I'm not going to go into it now. I'll spare everyone the Town's private well. And Title 5, uh, the Schedule of Fines is a new chapter which is taken out of the noncriminal disposition bylaw. We're separating it by, it is, it's, that table of fines will be by itself.
Okay. Oh, my gosh.
That sounds like a very Massachusetts chapter, Schedule of Fines.
And then we have, uh, documents, documentation of every Massachusetts law and section and act that the Town has accepted at Town Meeting.
And when it was accepted?
Yes.
Really?
When and what article?
Nice.
You know, we have an idea what we're doing.
Alright, we have to start somewhere, right?
That's right.
Okay.
See, five minutes, like I said.
Yeah, well, we, we can't, can't blame you for that. Uh, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I guess we'll see you in two weeks. Um, anybody else?
Thank you, Peter.
Anything else to question?
Great job.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Well, I'm sure there will be. Thank you and sorry for what's become.
Funny, I've said those exact words to people also.
And you guys are currently still meeting weekly, right?
Oh, yes, we are. Tuesday, 12:45 in this room.
Well, do I. Uh, alright, I'm going to move on. We are headed to Milk Room Brewing under petitions for one-day liquor licenses for four separate dates. Kevin Jarvey, come on down.
Hi. Evening.
Evening.
After they're approved, we get the printout that gets signed.
What?
So...
So, oh, the applications here?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, alright, so Kevin, we're looking at your applications, which came in at the end of February. Does that look right to you?
Yes.
Do you have them copies too?
I do not have copies.
You do not have copies? Alright.
I remember.
Uh, 312, 4 to 8, 313, 2 to 9, 314, 12 to 8, and 315, 12 to 6. That's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Correct.
Okay.
Question. Is it, is it the same cost, the same charge, regardless of the time?
Yes.
12 to 6?
Yeah, it's a flat fee.
It's a flat fee. So, is it necessary to vary the times? Can you just say?
Uh, well, the Sunday time is required to end at 6:00.
Oh, okay.
Um, I'm assuming your Thursday time was for the sake of your own needs?
Yeah. I mean, I just, I guess the time's put in as far as an ending time, or even the beginning. I hear what you're saying. I mean, does it be just put in for the day?
What's the maximum ending time on a non-Sunday?
Do we have a bylaw about that, Anita?
No, we don't have a noise ordinance.
So state law is 1 AM.
I mean, why not be consistent and have...
I'm in bed way before.
I think you took the times into consideration when you put these together, and this should suffice for you, all the different times?
Yeah, I think so. I understand what you're saying, though, and if, you know, in hindsight back, if it was just a day, knowing that, you know, the regulation is... And if, you know, in hindsight back, if it was just a day, knowing that, you know, the regulation is one AM and six PM on Sundays, you know, down the road, then I would probably put that into the application. But I did that because, I mean, that's what our intent would be.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Maybe that would change. You know, absolutely, if we, and down the road, we'd like to look at, uh, the potential for having live music and maybe some other things, and then maybe there would be, uh, you know, later on. And just so you guys all know, you probably asked, but I have submitted everything to John Cannell, who's my attorney, for the full license.
The permanent.
Which would, and I realize, started at federal level in the beginning, and now it actually will go either to you or to, I don't know if we'll go to David first. It goes to the town first.
I mean, just to verify paperwork, but we don't do anything relative to approving you.
That's not what my attorney told me.
Yeah, no, we have to have a public hearing first.
He was very specific that it goes the other way. He said it starts at the federal state and then to the town, but now for the next level of license, it will come here first.
Correct.
And then the state says, and basically the state, if it's okay with the town, then the state, then it doesn't go to the federal level.
Okay.
The federal has nothing to do with it, so there will, I think, be a hearing once.
Yes.
You'll get an application from my attorney hopefully in the next two or three weeks.
Okay.
With a package and everything that we're looking to do and.
Okay, because your limit for the year is thirty?
Correct.
And you're, you're gonna burn through them pretty fast at this rate, so.
Right, and from what he said, um, timeframe, as soon as he gets it to you, then it's just.
Yep.
Maybe it's thirty days within the town. So really, for him, two or three weeks, and then if it's thirty days or forty-five days within the town, then I mean, we're only, I don't think any more than two months away.
I guess I have a question, if, if these are gonna be regular too, um, I know that for the full license, you have to get your ducks in a row in terms of your insurance, your liability, all that, that fun stuff, right? Do you already have that in place for these, if we're gonna start doing these every weekend? Is that already situated if, God forbid, something were to happen?
Yeah, this next license, I won't have to do anything different on my insurance. Insurance is fully, is, is covered, other than, they'll be notified as to where, I shouldn't say that. They'll have to be notified as to where the areas that are gonna be allowed for the consumption of the alcohol.
Okay.
So, typical restaurants, you know, they have inside their doors. If they want to go outside, then there must be a physical barrier on the patio. It's the same type of thing, and that's why it's taking a little bit longer for me is because what I'm looking to do is have those physical barriers actually fence lines within the farm so that you'll be able to go out and walk on the property and actually go down to, um, the other end of the field and walk around, there'll be benches, and be able to actually go outside for, um, a walk around the whole property versus being confined to just a smaller space. So there was a little more mapping and measuring, and I spent a bunch of time getting those measurements correct so that when it goes to the attorney and then he comes back, you guys will know where we're looking to do. And as far as I know, the state regulation is that any, it has to be a physical barrier. It can be just about really anything, be it a rope or, you know, a bank draw line, or, you know, one of those types of things. So we have fences that hold in large animals, so they should be able to contain the population for a little bit anyways.
Okay.
Uh, so we have the liquor, liability, insurance from the last time?
Yep.
Yes?
Yep.
And your bartender's certification? Was that a cert, a great? Okay.
And we've made sure that anybody that's gonna be pouring is tip certified. And it's fairly simple, it's an online process, it's not, there's no reason why somebody shouldn't be. Just in my opinion, it takes, you know, an hour to do it, so if you're gonna, if you're gonna pour beer, you might as well get the tip certifications, we do make sure of that.
Um, any more questions? I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, uh, can we take the mull's one?
Yep.
Motion to approve all liquor licenses presented, uh, by Mr. Kevin Jarvey.
Second.
Um, and to me, can we include the dates as presented?
The times, yeah.
Dates as presented. So March twelfth, thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth.
Thank you.
Uh, any questions, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right, you're done.
Thank you so much, and then, yeah, well, I have one more question.
Oh.
Because I was actually at the office a little bit earlier and I just had just missed. So obviously moving forward, I don't want to have to, you guys are every two weeks. So if we were to submit an application for the following Thursday, Friday, because I don't know when my next opening is going to be. So this, of course, is not hindsight, this is when I went in today. If we end up with extra, could we have another opening the next Thursday and Friday? Kinda to just get rid of some of the inventory, because then the next thing is, it takes us, obviously it's four, five, six weeks to generate enough to have one of these types of openings, but then in between, there's some left. So my question is, because I missed today, could I submit this?
For the nineteenth and twentieth?
Is there a meeting in between?
No.
There's not. If not, I can.
You don't think you can get rid of your excess inventory under your farming?
Well, that's, that's really, it's a growler fills for off-premise consumption.
Right.
We could, you know, or I could just even put in for the weekend after this next meeting, if that's what you want. That's fine by me too.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to.
That's fine.
But he has an application at hand right here?
Well, I, well, in a minute, I have my check, and I didn't know if it's possible. I mean, I have no problem with putting it off for another.
I have no problem making a motion, but the question is, is.
We're getting kinda.
Yeah, I don't, I believe you, I'm not.
It's not, it's on the agenda very specifically for your dates.
For those dates.
So we could not approve it tonight.
Okay.
Um.
Then I'll just put it for the following weekend.
Yeah, I mean, if it, yeah. If it were a.
We could meet, we could do like we did last time and meet prior to.
I just, I know that we've, we've declined businesses in town requesting emergency meetings to, for licensure. And if we keep doing that, it sets a bad precedent. And I, quite frankly, I don't think we need to be meeting every week to talk about one business's liquor license. I mean, no offense.
Oh, yeah, I fully understand, I don't want to put the board out in any way.
What I'm gonna suggest to you, Kevin, is you're down to, what are we down, twenty-two days? Take some days.
I'm just throwing out there.
Pick a whole bunch.
Give us all the days.
Yeah.
You're out, you're thirty, we're gonna know.
And then I'll have my license before, okay?
Yeah.
Absolutely. And then, so next time, we'll go through a whole bunch of them, we'll have them booked in for the next two months.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or.
Also, as a side note, I appreciate that you have a red ale.
Yes, I saw your red ale.
It's really hard to find a good red ale anyway.
We did a double batch of it too, so we have plenty.
Right.
We do, we have extended amounts, plenty supplied.
All right.
Well, thank you very much.
Have a good weekend.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Thanks, Karen.
Moving on, Karen Greenwood, welcome Karen Greenwood.
You have enough for the class?
There's a refrigerator in there. Karen Greenwood, Seven Breezy Lane, here in Rutland. And you all have the package, I think that Mike copied for you. Back on, um, Veterans Day weekend, I was approached and asked if I knew how to go about designating Rutland as a Purple Heart town. So I took the bow by the horns and I ran and found the right contact who was doing everything here. Here in Massachusetts, there's about a hundred twenty towns that have designated their communities their Purple Heart communities. And I was surprised at that, when you think of how many cities and towns we have. So hopefully, like, when I do it, or somebody else does, the word gets out, somebody asks somebody in their town to take it and run with it. August seventh is nationally known as the Purple Heart Day. And I'm here to propose putting up nine signs to coincide with the nine Welcome to Rutland signs that were put up. And in your package, you have the cost, which, I don't know if that's good or bad. I can't tell you the last time I ordered metal signs to put in entrance to a town. But you've got the, um, invoice there from the gentleman up in Lemonster for, uh, six hundred fifty-seven dollars. So I'm proposing that be the cost, and if you decide to go ahead with it, I say, we order them. You've got his W nine there that goes with it. And also attached is what the sign looks like. I don't think that's twenty-four inches by eighteen, I think it's a little bigger than that, otherwise you wouldn't be able to see it when you were coming into the town, so put the measurements on there.
Just for perspective, the paper's eight by eleven.
Hell. So it's a little bigger than that.
Yep.
Um, and then if it does get approved, um, I'm not sure, um, but from what I understand, if we get the signs, then we could call on the DPW to put them up. Whether they put them, sometimes you see them attached already to a sign that's there, but I think it should be its own separate metal post to stand out then, you know, below Lions Club or whatever is in the entrance to the town. And I did mention the, um, National Recognition Day is August seventh, but I would propose if we moved on this with no delay to maybe consider June fourteenth, which is Flag Day and it's on a Sunday, to have a dedication here in town. Whether it be in the center, at one of the signs, it'd be a little difficult for parking if you pick the entrance into town, expect, you know, fifty to a hundred people be there. And to publicize this, um, I, I feel as though we're so limited nowadays with publicizing because you're depending on the website, which everybody doesn't go to. You're depending a sign in the center of town, everybody doesn't drive into center town. The landmark doesn't do as much. So all those ways would be to publicize it, in addition to working with the American Legion, using their email, getting the word out. The, um, it, it may be if it's approved before the town meeting, it could be brought up that we're having this event. I do not know, I'm trying to find out, I don't think there's a way to find out who in town has the Purple Heart. Because obviously you're gonna invite them, but to do individual invitations might be a little difficult. So publicizing it, if they come forward, um, then you'd have the names similar, you know, like we had all the veterans there when we were doing the honor roll dedication. And in the package there is the proclamation, which you all gotta copy, but Mike probably has one original, that if the selectmen could please sign it, whether it's tonight, after tonight, Michael, email me to go pick it up, and I'm gonna send this to the gentleman who's working on this, who did the proclamation, if he's out of Holyoke, um, Bill Willett. And he's always been the contact for most of the other cities and towns when they've, um, proposed designating a Purple Heart community. Any questions?
I have a question that goes along with the Purple Heart community designation. Does that, um, are you thinking of, uh, Purple Heart parking spots also? I know in Holden, behind the senior center, there's designated purple, purple painted spots for Purple Heart recipients.
I think that would just be a matter of choosing them where.
It's not one.
Whether it's one in the town hall, like I say, I don't know how many in Rollins, so, you know, would they be coming up there? Would it be on the side of the annex? And that would be up to a matter of getting it painted by the DPW. I'm sure you, you know, could find out from Holden where they got their stencil and stuff, we can always contact them.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure if it was something in becoming a Purple Heart town, or if it was.
No, yeah, no, it's separate.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So where do we get the six hundred and fifty-seven dollars from? Just up there, okay?
It'd probably be a special article, to be honest, but we don't need to commit to purchasing the signs in order to sign the proclamation. We can, by basically, by signing the proclamation, we say we'll work towards getting those signs.
Yeah, so, but we could put it on the, on the, as a special warrant article.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm all for it.
It's money well spent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure is.
And this was something that was on the board's goal and objectives that we've made for this year too.
Thank you for, thanks Karen, thank you for helping us meet one of our goals and objectives.
Oh, if she, I can't credit for that.
It seems very anticlimactic to sign this proclamation tonight, we can.
Uh, you don't have to do it tonight, I'm just saying that it goes back to the gentleman.
Yeah.
Who would, um, probably put it in a frame or something, I don't know. We don't even have a date picked out yet, so I just, as part of the package, I thought I'd explain.
I would recommend doing it at our next meeting. I'll make this, I'll put it on fancier paper and we'll do a big thing, yeah.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Good work, thank you Karen.
Do you want a motion and everything that the board has approved?
Yeah, make the motion now and we'll do the signing later on.
Motion to sign the proclamation to make the town of Rutland a Purple Heart community.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen.
And Chuck, can we maybe accommodate our DPW director a little bit?
Yeah, do you, um, do you have some vision of leaving here before our meeting is over? Because we can go out of order, although I will say the next thing is actually him anyway.
Yeah.
It's all right.
I kinda like you, I kinda like you here, Joe, you know?
We like all of you here.
We're used to you being here.
Yeah, we like all of you here.
It's nice.
He's on his own time.
I mean, you're all sitting way in the back, which is a little disconcerting, but whatever.
Well, no, we're circling the rolls.
Middle ear.
Uh, all right, town administrator update, it's all you.
So our first one is actually Joe, and that's why he's here, is the, an update.
Looked up to the third row.
On the Route sixty-eight, Wachusett Street intersection. Uh, we had a meeting with the engineers who are doing the study that was passed at town meeting. Um, Joe can get a little more into the details. They said that the intersection looks structurally sound, uh, but we asked them to do another look at it for safety purposes. Um, they've done their traffic counts, they've done, uh, we've, we've had Wachusett Street surveyed. Um, and Joe can kind of take over some more details from there.
I can elaborate a little bit. So, we hired tie-in bond engineers to evaluate the intersection. They've done their preliminary intersection, and basically what they do is they go out there, take a lot of measurements, draw it up, um, they do some research. They look at things like average daily traffic counts, how much, how much traffic volume, how, how fast they're going. Um, they also do analysis of the accidents, they go back ten, fifteen years on the accidents. Um, I don't remember the indices exactly, but the, uh, number of accidents there is higher than the state average and definitely higher than the national average. So what that tells you is clearly the intersection's a little bit dangerous. When they met with us, they were asking for some direction. In other words, what were we asking them to accomplish now that they've done their preliminary work? They want to know what direction we wanted to go in, so we tried to give them some direction. Um, basically, we told them that we don't, based on the numbers, there's no traffic backups there. There's no volume concerns, no one has to wait to get in and out of there. Clearly, our biggest thing is safety. Um, and that's the direction we, we asked them to look in, is to look at the safety aspects of the intersection. Um, and they seem to follow all that, and they're going to make recommendations to the town, um, on three tiers, two or three tiers, basically, um, very cost-effective, moderate costs, and then the, the most expensive you could do to make it safer than it really is. So if you, if, uh, just some rough numbers, so zero to five thousand, ten thousand, fifteen thousand, and then over fifty. Um, at this time, they did not advise signalizing the intersection. Uh, I'd like to elaborate just a little on what Mike said. Um, they said struct, he implied it was structurally okay. They said that the current signage, um, how the intersection is laid out, all the indicators for people driving out there are acceptable, they meet current codes. Um, but clearly, when you look at the number of accidents over the last twenty years, there's something wrong. They came up with a couple, um, things I didn't think of. The streets were laid out by the Worcester County Engineers, both those roads were, so they have the character as if they look the same, which may be throwing some folks off. There's one other thing we asked them to do, we asked them to see what it would cost or to slow people down right at that intersection, so propose a lower speed limit. And that may require a speed study, so they have to give us a price on that as well. The one thing I asked though, and we'll get a report in writing, and obviously you'll get it, um, we wanted to have information well enough, well in advance of the spring town meeting so that we could make some suggestions or possibly fund some articles as a result of their suggestions. And we should have that probably a month before the spring town meeting. Okay? Thanks, Joe.
So, a month before will help us a time.
Well, we'll have it in time to get the article written if we had to.
Okay.
This town emergency situation.
Right.
Is it a possibility that tie-in bond would come out? I'm thinking the special maybe, prior to the annual? I'm thinking the special maybe prior to the annual, where if we have any money available in terms of free cash, we would be funding final articles, things like that. Uh, you know, I have a FinCon member here.
There's definitely some, um, public meetings in the budget that when we wrote out the scope, so they will come here if we want them to.
Okay.
The people at the meeting were basically the folks who proposed hiring, hiring the engineer in the first place. So it was myself, the two chiefs, Michael.
Okay. And the, not going to hold you at anything, but the range, the money range?
I think you just said they're going to tier the suggestions.
They're going to tier the suggestions. I don't have enough to give them, sorry.
Okay.
I mean, we should put a roundabout, right? Yeah, slow people down and have to.
Roundabout.
Okay.
All right, I, I mean, step in the right direction.
Some good takeaways. Is the intersection, do we have to run out there and put a new stop sign in or run out and, you know, make some change? It meets current codes. Um, is there a problem with the intersection because there's a, you know, relatively large number of accidents over time? Yes.
So it was really interesting. I mean, you know, we certainly had, um, plenty of pushback and there was some validity to it. Of people saying, why are we spending the money on the study? Let's just do something. And then we also had, uh, I don't remember what meeting it was, but we had somebody in here who was adamantly saying that the light crossing sixty-eight was not red, right? That it was yellow. And, uh, you know, there, so clearly to your point, the impression of that intersection and what it is meant to do is deeply flawed somehow in the, the brains of a lot of the drivers. So, you know, I'm just sitting here still wondering in March. No, but I'm still wondering in March what we're headed towards. Are we headed towards the flashier stop signs? Are we headed towards the strobes, which they have at the sixty-eight, sixty-two intersection, you know, and what those price points are?
We, we basically gave them some guidance.
Yeah.
Make some suggestions, low tech, moderate, high.
All right.
Do, does, when you provided them with suggestions, I know that there are a bunch.
We did provide them with a lot of suggestions. We really didn't. We just, we focused on, okay, no problems with volume. The intersection is sound. We have safety concerns. Make some safety concerns.
And it's, it's tough too, because I understand people that were at town meeting, look, it's two roads that intersect. It's a T-shaped intersection. It's nothing out of the ordinary. I guess my concern too is that I want to make sure we look at there are going to be more residential homes put up over in that area. Specifically on Watchuzet, there's a bunch of lots that are available. As we increase density over there, that might change the nature of what really needs to be done. So that's kind of my two cents is to maybe we should take a look at that, what that would look like. So I don't know if we can convey that to, to tie-in bond, but.
So you're suggesting that based on projected housing density?
I just don't know how that's going to change the, the, I guess, the traffic flow, but also kind of the feel of that intersection. If you have residential homes that are condensed right there, um, if there might be something down the road that we could look at that might be a little bit more permanent.
I think I'd be more inclined to reevaluate the intersection when the homes are in place.
Right. I, I just think we have to keep that in mind because they're being built. The lots are for sale, so.
Some other interesting facts, um, the speeds there are quite high.
Right.
We were actually able to get a look at the speeds and getting those lowered is not, not an easy task in this state.
I did notice that Chief had some cruisers. Um, I usually go that way coming to and from work. And there, there's been a once, a bunch of, uh, during peak times, police speed traps over there that have been pretty effective in slowing folks down. So.
And of course, we know we're not alone here because we do reference all the time. I just did it. The sixty-eight, sixty-two intersection is being better signed, better lighting on those, on those markers. But they also just had an accident, I think, two weeks ago.
Probably not at the rate that we, we do it.
No.
Watchuzet.
No, but just back to Joe's point of there's nothing technically wrong with the way that is set up.
But we're not LED.
Yeah, no, I know.
We haven't gone to LED.
We had some, we had some other questions that came up and I, I did, I'm real, I was a little reluctant to bring them up earlier on because they're really not technical. Um, some of it's anecdotal. Um, what, what kind of people, why are people using that intersection? So I guess there's some folks taken, cut through that way to go up to New Hampshire. And I, I didn't know that. And, and so those people may not be from Rutland per se. And they may be, may be closer to, they may be as more, there may be a higher chance of them being involved in an accident than say someone from town.
Can I just say the elephant room? How about people just pay attention to when they're driving? All right, instead of looking at your phone or speeding on this long straightaway because you get whatever, you know. I mean, we're up to code. People need to be responsible for themselves. Hate to.
I think that's what, if you look at Hubbardston, because that, we talked about this, that road cuts through the center of Hubbardston. And if you ask them, they don't have, I mean, obviously there's been a pretty egregious accident involving a drunk driver, um, crossing lanes. But, uh, the way that they handle it is they have cruisers out all the time in that condensed area on sixty-eight, monitoring people to make sure that as they go by the downtown, they're not going through at sixty miles an hour. And maybe that comes down to maybe allocating additional resources over there during peak times to.
But the speed drops way down in Hubbardston.
People don't pay attention to that though. That's why they have cruisers out there.
Right, but it's posted, like, but now it's, speed limit's fifty through there and you were in an accident. Even if somebody's going the speed limit at fifty, it's going to be a lot worse than somebody going through at a thirty or thirty-five. I mean, it's just.
But is it speed or is it like the bad accident that they had at Watchuzet Streets, they didn't see the sign? They didn't, they didn't recognize the stop sign.
That was something the senior engineer picked up on and I, I, I missed it. He said, um, both of those roads, we talked about it in length, were laid out by Worcester County years ago. And the actual character of the road when you, looks very similar. In other words, so you think that both roads are the same, so it's possible.
You think it's a four-way stop.
Yeah.
Because of the, because the appearance is very, very similar.
Yeah.
One of the things we talked about briefly was possibly putting some type of an island or some better delineation at sixty-eight where, where Watchuzet comes in.
Yeah.
That, that's not a super expensive solution or narrow it down just so that you see a change in the character of the road.
Great.
That may help. That's something we're considering, but again, we haven't seen the final report yet.
Great.
But the Four Corners, that's LED, right? Or at, the Four Corners stop sign? Pleasant Dale on one twenty-two, is that lit? Do we have any, uh, red, red lit?
No.
We don't have one?
No.
No. I know, we've talked about the one that's in Holden at the intersection of Puttoxit, which is nice.
I'd be curious.
And sixty-two and sixty-eight.
I would imagine we'll get some estimates on those as part of the report. And as soon as I get that information available, I could send it on to the board electronically.
To your point too, I think the, the interesting point you bring up is that folks that are not traveling these roads all the time might be more apt to, I mean, you see that all the time. Some of those, like you said, in Holden, some of those intersections, if you're not really paying attention and those roads all look the same, you're thinking that, oh, I can just, this is either four-way or there's nothing or.
They turn off their blinker.
Yeah. So that might, that might be, I mean, that's a really good point.
So it sounds like we all have the same goal, which is we should have something for town meeting. Okay.
That was the, that was when we laid out the original scope, we were quite clear about that.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
What else, Joe?
Well, just as one final on this is process and the town administrator and myself talked about it at length. Should other traffic stuff come up, traffic issues come up, try and run it through that traffic, send it to Mike. And we'll talk, uh, traffic and parking. There's a group of us who meet. And if we think we have to recommend a study, we'll push it back and you can vote it similar to this one.
I think all of the traffic issues stem from Dunkin' Donuts and the rest of the town. So I don't know what study can, you know, recommend there, but.
Well, that is just speed. Speed's a big one.
Um, so to Jeff's point, this is the first meeting in a long time where I haven't skipped around. So I'm happy to start doing that at any moment if you are trying to get out of here for a particular.
Some time. I've got to pick up one of my kids later, so.
He's on his own time, that's all I ask.
Okay, all right.
We work him to death throughout the day.
All right, then Mike, next.
All right. Uh, just as an update, last week Governor Baker filed a two hundred forty million dollar economics development stimulus bill. Um, that's currently before the legislature. That includes multiple different programs, new, some existing. Is a forty million dollar bump in MassWorks, uh, funding, which is for infrastructure repair. Uh, five million dollars for a new program for small business grants for start, uh, people that are starting up can apply for grants there. The housing choice legislation that lowers the threshold for voting on zoning bylaws related to new housing growth to a simple majority rather than a three-fourths. So those are all things that were recently filed last week at an event. Um, so just as an update that that is now before the legislature. There are some programs that could benefit Rutland and some that may affect Rutland based on how, while we vote at town meeting. So just wanted to keep you all up to date on that.
Can you, uh, perhaps, following up on that? Some of these, like MassWorks and block grant funding.
Yeah.
Which can be used for large scale infrastructure projects in town. I mean, that's how Spencer got their main street kind of.
Yeah.
Prettyed up.
Spencer's pretty?
Well, no, the main street.
They're all Spencer. Oh.
Not picking a fight with Spencer. He's gorgeous over there, you know? The, the question I have, and maybe this would be helpful, because some of those opportunities require a good deal of planning beforehand before application's submitted. So for example, for block grant, I believe MassWorks is the same. You need to have a series of town meetings. Um, it needs to go through a process. So really applying for some of these can be a six to eight month window. If you could outline what you think we would be eligible for and what that process looks like, so we can maybe start planning now to get some of those larger things tackled, it might be really useful for us to take a look at.
Yeah, for sure. And it, public meetings, not town meetings.
Uh, that's, public hearings, public meetings.
Yeah, yeah. Not an actual like special.
I'm so sorry. I could, can I interrupt you for a second?
Yeah.
Uh, clearly I'm having withdrawal from not picking and choosing what we do out of order because I'm looking at Anita and realizing that you're at the end and we didn't ask you. If you'd like to be bumped up and.
I'm good.
Okay. Again, we like having you all here, so it's fine. So I get to go in order. I get to go in order, okay? Thank you.
That was just the update on the stimulus bill.
Thank you.
The, uh, our insurance agency, MIA, the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Agency, uh, has requested that they start meeting with, um, myself and our public safety departments quarterly as part of our, uh, rewards program where we get up to five percent off of our premiums. Talk, they've met with us last week, Joe. Uh, Joe was also part of that group. And talking about different training programs that are coming up for, um, our employees. If we send employees to these trainings or we even house them ourselves, because a lot of them actually are fire department personnel can train the town for. Sharps, um, there's, uh, bucket truck classes. There's different things like just operating classes. Uh, we get points for there. We get points for what's called tailgate training, which is just, you sit down with the employees and you just go over there. Do a reminder of what our current policies and procedures are. There's current practices that we do that if we formalize them and put them into policies, we get points that way as well. So there's actually a lot, a lot of opportunity for us to save a good chunk of change, um, on those there. So we are actively working to get as many of those as we can. Um, so that was just an update on that meeting because it was last week. The Rutland Heights update, that is just to inform everyone that the first RFP for the property closes on March thirtieth. Um, we've had one applicant pull an RFP. They had a meeting with the, preliminary meeting with the RDIC where they presented their plan last week for, uh, fifty units of senior housing condos, uh, just for the top portion of it. So it wouldn't even be the full, the street front property would still be available under that proposal. But again, that proposal hasn't even been submitted yet, but they present, uh, presented it to the RDIC last week, so it is public record.
Is it Christopher House again?
No. No, Eastland.
Are they looking for front, front money?
No.
Those projects, in, to, to kind of piggyback off that, you're seeing a lot of these private companies come and develop these things for the different incentives available. I'm not sure or familiar with the proposal at hand. Um, but you're seeing these becoming really popular projects, uh, as we head east towards four eighty-five. The projects are bringing in a good deal of money into the town, even after you factor in expenditures for increase, increased, uh, fire PD instances, things like that. They're really popular projects and the statistics bear out the fact that this part of Massachusetts has an aging population that really needs that type of support in housing. So I'm glad to see that.
Yep, me too.
We're getting stuff in.
Totally for senior housing.
Yeah.
Total.
And again, this, it wouldn't even be the full property as well. They're, they're looking for just the pro, the parcel at the top of the hill by the flagpole.
And I think we had talked about when Christopher House was looking to come in, how that might spur someone else to want to locate in there, whether it's, you know, someone servicing that community or a small, in a retail.
Certainly a nursing home need too, I'll tell you that.
Yeah. So we'll see. Hopefully they do turn in by the March thirtieth deadline, but we at least have some interest. We have had another couple of companies come to us through our broker. I've got to say, um, I'm really impressed with Keller-Hearn-Sedowski, who's our broker for the property. They've got, um, Dave and I had met with four or five interested parties in it. So there, even though, uh, Eastland is the only company that's pulled one so far for the March thirtieth deadline. Uh, what our broker suggested, and when we released the RFP, we released two concurrent ones. One which a March, with a March thirtieth deadline and one with a May thirtieth deadline. Reason being is if someone has all their ducks in a row and is ready to go, why wait? So get them, they get their foot in the door and let them go. And then if someone else wants to come in after, we also have the one that ends on May thirtieth to, um, get more interest that way as well. So, uh, we are ongoing in marketing that property there and we'll hope to.
Can I ask how the meeting went? I know that that's something that was in the RDIC's potential plan for redevelopment of that property as a priority.
I was at the finance committee meeting at that time. Our town planner, Dave George, was there on my behalf. Uh, there were some questions that were initially raised, raised. So for instance, when I and Dave, when Dave and I met with them, it was, um, twenty units less than what they presented for the RDIC last week. As a almost, this is what our initial plan is, maybe we go over here too. The issue is, is when you add the extra twenty units, you go into the area of land where the solar panels will be going. So we just had to take that out. And it was just a clarification of information at that point.
Was the additional units based on, uh, cash flow projections? Um, or was it to trigger some sort of financing deal with, with other sources?
It was their projections on population need. So it said it looked like there was enough need that could accommodate those other twenty units.
But like the build-out in terms of their revenue, I mean, the numbers were solid and.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. That's exciting.
Yeah. To have someone present as this is what we would be paying you and not, we'd need something back, was refreshing to see for that property.
It was refreshing. Um, I, I did attend and, uh, I think the company had sort of treated the solar project as a hypothetical. Since it's not there yet, it's not delineated. So that was an easy thing to sort of say, well, we could do this instead in case solar wasn't a done deal yet, which how would they have known, one way or the other. The other concern I think that came up, um, and I would agree with it, was that they used as part of their selling point that technically there was no age restriction in this community.
Yeah, senior by design is what they call it.
Senior by design.
What does that mean? Does that mean you're having folks live in with the seniors or does that mean I could rent an apartment?
It means there's no restriction, but the understanding is that the design of the property, the size of the, um, units would discourage a larger family thereby creating the savings situation for a community with respect to budget.
They presented, it was two bed, two bedroom, one floor. I forget the square footage, but it was really just like, yeah, eighteen hundred square feet. But they did reach out to us later on too, to say if that's the issue, they would consider just saying out front fifty-five plus. The reason why they had been doing senior by design in their other communities like Oxford and Auburn is because sometimes just saying the word senior or fifty-five plus blocks out a eligible group of population that would, that's looking to downsiders, would move there because there's a almost stigma as, oh, well, that's the Wrinkle Village, that's not where I'm moving into type thing. It's, it's.
Your words.
No, it's, it's, it's an issue that we try to, it's not something that we're saying is the case. It's just, there's a perception.
It's a real thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's not, that it's not really fifty-five plus, it's eighty-five plus.
We can look at that.
Yeah.
And I think the important thing in that night, I wish I could have gone. I was actually presenting a, a housing study in a different part of the state, which was dealing with this exact issue. Um, and the concern that's always raised is, uh, you know, if you change different areas of zoning, because we're working with a fifty-five plus project in an unused school building. The rest of downtown being developed or different areas being developed, how do you design apartments that don't overload public capacity with the schools and, and things like that? And we're seeing a decline in enrollment right now. But it's, it's one of those things where how do you design a project that's attractive to, to that population? I just, it's interesting to hear that that was a caveat in their proposal. I, I hadn't seen that before.
Their, um, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I thought something with the agreement with the state for that property was that it couldn't be, um, like general population housing.
Single-family residential, I thought was the.
But I thought it had to, yeah, I thought there were additional restrictions, not just single-family, not, not single-family.
Yeah, there are certain zoning restrictions that's there. We did check with town council who informed us that so long as you can show that the intent is there, which the intent of this would be fifty-five plus by their design, the HPDD board could vote to say yes, this fits in with the intent of the bylaw. So if it gets down to that, it would just be majority vote of the HPDD board, who is the site plan review authority of the property.
Well, were all the units market rate or were they going to have mixed?
Market rate.
Would they build a?
Uh, some, no, actually, excuse me, some are affordable. I just forget the percentage. I think it's, it's very small. It's like one or two units of the planned ones, but. Most are market rate.
Do they include a, uh, community center or something like Hawthorne Hills or is that something that would be negotiable to?
That would be something that we would, if, if anyone, that'd be something that someone else who'd be looking in. But again, once we get them as the anchor that's there, it's.
Be a natural fit.
It, it, it kind of just flows. It, it's, starts the domino effect with it. But yeah, it's, I think it's one or two of the entire thing that they were saying could be affordable, but the most are market rate.
I mean, market rate in Rutland is pretty much affordable, considering like the unstaits for Worcester County anyway. Oh, I mean, like the actual numbers.
Yeah. And they did provide data that showed that, um, they had, it was like a hundred thirty units in Oxford and then a in between eighty to one twenty. in between eighty to one-twenty, I know that's a long range, but about that much in Auburn. Um, where it was the same fifty-five by design and every unit was purchased and every unit was purchased by someone who was fifty-five plus and no units were purchased by families who had children. And they use that in their, um, example to say that this really wouldn't be a tax on the school system, even though it's fifty-five by design rather than restricted.
It was, it was an odd marketing tool because when you look at their Uxbridge property marketing, it says very clearly, um, no age restriction.
I know somebody that moved in one of there.
Yeah.
And they are fifty-five plus.
Well, I, that's great. It just, it, it almost felt like it was more exclusionary to market it as designed to keep you out rather than saying, this is a community for fifty-five and older. This is a community for active seniors. This is, I don't know. Somehow it felt.
Can we, is it appropriate then maybe to, to reach out to the other communities that they've operated and to see how they felt the process went and?
I would personally wait until the proposal comes in.
Right, right.
Because this is just a presentation that we had that now we can talk about because it's public record.
Nice. It's good to hear something.
No, it's great.
They were very nice.
Option final like for twenty years.
Yeah.
They were very nice.
Thank you.
Uh, last thing on the update list is just a quick update on how things are going with the coronavirus. We do not have any cases here in town. Um, we have been in contact with the school district weekly. Um, there, we're just making plans. We're keeping our buildings clean. Uh, Joe has extra staff just cleaning the buildings with bleach, making sure everything's wiped down. We're taking on the precautionary measures that the CDC has put forward for us. I really don't see it as a big issue here in town. Our health agent, Rich Stevens, and I are meeting with the school district tomorrow, who's doing a joint meeting with all of the health agents, town administrators and managers from their member communities just to say if it does get here, here's our plan and this is how we would implement it. Basically what Rich has been telling people when they call here and asking is so long as you have your basic hygiene routines, like washing your hands, avoiding touching your face if you don't have to, um, and things like that, you, you'll be okay. And basically what he's saying is wash your hands as if you just ate a bag of Cheetos and need to put on a white button-down shirt. You want, you need to get the orange off your hands. You need to scrub it. So scrub your hands like you would be getting the orange off your hands before you button your white button-down shirt is how we've been telling people who call.
Any questions?
And the last, no, welcome. Last thing I'll say is just remember Pinewood Derby is this Saturday at CTMS.
Oh, God. Yeah, I had forgotten that.
Are you ready?
Uh, I gotta get some painting done, but then I'll be ready.
You ready? All right.
All right. Is there anyone here for public comment? Hearing none. We're gonna move on. Old business. Oh my gosh, very old business. The town administrator evaluation. Um, Mike gave you the largest packet of the night, which I want to circle.
And we only have certain, some copies of it because the printer ran out of ink, so I do have.
Well, I, and I want to circle back because this is one of those things where we said, well, when we have a computer, we're not going to need to do this. And I think Wayne was the only one that brought his computer tonight. Yeah. That was good. So we'll get there. Um, as of this evening, this packet is now public record, um, and shareable. Uh, you see, you have a cover letter from the town administrator responding to our documentation. Our documentation includes the cover letter I had presented to him, which essentially was just a, uh, uh, an addition together of all of the performance evaluation scores with their averages. Uh, and then you'll have, I think in order, yep, um, everybody's documentation as they gave it, whether it was handwritten or sent in or whatever. Um, at this time, we've got some options. Uh, he has responded to us. We are now looking at the sort of public phase of the process, which would mean going sort of down the table and reiterating some of the information that you had included within your specific evaluation documentation, um, with Mike finishing up and ending with his response to us. However, the board has some flexibility in that. Um, obviously it's been a little while since we all talked about this and a little while since a lot of you filled yours out, so.
Well, what, what, are you pleased with, with this or is there?
Yeah, my overall score was a four point one out of five. Um, very.
Very good.
Pleased with that. I mean, there's always room for improvement and I thought the, all the criticism, uh, constructive criticism was helpful and engaging. Happy to, um, answer any questions that you further, uh, further questions you have. Um, some things that came up, um, throughout some of the evaluations that I saw, uh, were population planning, which is something I'm glad to say we are doing. Um, where after we met last June at the retreat meeting, uh, to say that's something that we'd like to see happen is planning for when we hit the ten thousand mark. I had a department head meeting the following week. We sat down. I said, start planning for it. And then when we got the budgets in November, that was the first thing that we were asked that our department had to do was, okay, now make your budgets for those plans that we asked you to make. So, um, happy to see that that was a concern of the board as well as mine to, it kind of helped show that we were going in the right path in me asking the department heads to do that exercise. It's been, uh, fun, almost fourteen months now. Uh, it's, uh, Rutland's a real, I think I wrote this in my cover letter that, uh, Rutland's a town where you can really tell that the people here really care about the community and are invested in it, which is something you don't get in many areas of the state and a lot of cities and towns would wish for. And it's one of the things that really makes Rutland special. So it's really nice to be able to work for a town that cares about its community like that. It's been different in that when I started in January of nineteen, I had two administrative assistants that covered the office full time. Uh, one took a job in a different municipality in February of, um, nineteen and another, uh, the other, uh, took an extended bereavement period starting in March of nineteen, which left the office, uh, with just me as its employee for a period of five of my thirteen months that I've been here. There, since there was no previous appropriation to hire attempt, um, I couldn't go out and get someone. But we also had so many new department heads that rearranging the existing clerical staff that we had also just wasn't feasible at the time. But even with those challenges, particularly because that five-month period was also town meeting season and town meeting fell in the middle of that. I'm really happy with how we ended up, where we've gotten to, what we were able to accomplish. Uh, particularly when I came in and kind of inherited things like our managed growth discussions, the water sewer issues, um, the negotiations for the leases for Marshfield and Glenwood Field. I'm really excited with where we've come and I'm happy to see where we're going. It's been, it's been fun, to be honest. Um, I can say that I did, uh, this didn't come up in the evals, but just to go along with the things that I have written in my contract, I did complete my, uh, Massachusetts Certified Purchase Officer Training in the timeframe outlined in the contract. I've received all my other certifications that were outlined in the contract as requested. Let's keep going. Um, and again, any comments, questions, concerns, I'm happy to address them now if any come forward.
Yes. Can I?
You may start.
Through the chair. I would encourage first anyone who wants to take a look at this to please read it because I think we all did a pretty comprehensive job of putting the materials together. And there's a lot here to sift through. Um, I did make some recommendations, uh, which again, I mean, you could see in my scoring. I guess one of the reasons, to be honest with you, Mike, that I ran for the seat, and Sheila will know because I called her before running for the seat, was that I've been working in government, uh, and with nonprofits my entire career. And when I had heard the town had hired someone with your experience level, I was really terrified and thought this would be a horrible employment decision. And that is, that is me being honest. Um, as to why I ran, since being, coming into this office, um, I can't tell you how wrong I've been proven and how hard it is for me to admit that and my wife will tell you how stubborn I am. But, uh, I really feel like part of this process, what was good for me was, uh, throughout the whole time I've been in this position, listening to your department heads. And I think that's where really the strength shown through and kind of the feedback they're providing, um, and the competence that, that you inspire in them, which I think is, has been very productive and that's very noteworthy. So I, you know, I'm at the point where I know publicly you're interviewing for another job. But if we're fortunate enough to have you for the length and duration of your contract, it's my belief that by the end of that contract, we'll have one of the stronger town administrators in central Massachusetts.
Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate that.
Next.
I, I couldn't be more pleased with, with, um, the work you've been doing, Mike. Uh, obviously I rated you in the top tier in every category. You've, uh, clearly achieved excellence in, in mastering this job, as Mitch just said. On and on and on. I'd like to talk about some of the things that aren't my strongest point, the financial aspect, but the, uh, more enjoyable parts of the job, which I think you've really brought life to, uh, the town. You know, whether it be the signs or the food truck festival or, you know, kicking it up with us at Moses Howe Day, Pinewood Derby and things like that. That, uh, cause this, cause you are the third, the third TA that Leah and I have seen during our, our tour. And, uh, the other, the other, well, with the interim, with the interim, Bob.
Right. Good point.
All great people, all great people. But, uh, it's been very enjoyable the last fourteen months doing these type of events and to see you out there with the community and, and to have somebody who's, uh, embedded himself into the community is, I, I believe, I speak for a majority that you're beloved, uh, by the people here. And, uh, we would certainly miss you. But, uh, we're excited to cheer you on because we know that greatness is, is about you. It's one of the words that, that would describe you. And, uh, we're all excited to see where you end up and it's going to be great things. So just happy to be here for that part of it. So.
Thank you.
Yep. Nothing negative. Nothing negative.
If I may, I think I wrote that, um, you came, you and, came in in a time of great transition. Not only for your role, as you mentioned, even within your office, but just kind of the town as a whole, um, with new GPW coming on and everything. There were a lot of balls in the air and a lot more that needed to be in the air. So I never doubted that you could do it all and you've done it all and then a lot more. So I, and you haven't shied away from any of it. So I appreciate that. And through all of that, you've really helped to get, and I think I said this in my comments, get Rutland out of Rutland. You know, get us out of town hall and out into the community. And you've really become a beloved member of the community. So, um, you've done a lot on that PR side for us and kind of local government as a whole. And I thank you a lot for that because I think you've really opened the door and made people realize that that they're, that you're here, that we're all here and accessible, but that their voices matter and have a big impact. So we're definitely going to miss you if, if you go on, when you go on.
Nothing yet.
But, yeah. So thank you.
Well, thank you.
Yeah. I don't really want to see that day. One of the biggest things I noticed is, um, you came, you came from a city and you came to a small town. Totally different dynamics. Everything's totally different. And, um, very impressed on how you absorbed, uh, all the aspects of a small town. And all the things you ne, you never had to deal with in the city. Again, it's totally different. I've been impressed. I think we made a fine choice.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. Thank you.
Yep.
And I don't want to see you.
Just pat himself on the back.
I did.
I, uh, I'm going to refer to my letters because it took me a long time to sort of figure out how to phrase that, um, in a, in a briefer way. But, uh, you, Mike, brought something to the town of Rutland that I don't know we thought we needed. Maybe gets back to what Mitch was talking about. There is an energy, um, and a positivity and a fresh way of looking at things that we simply didn't have. Uh, we were pretty mired in town government and, and you do, you get mired in it. You get mired in the minutia. Um, and in the absence of a central administrator for so long, you really get mired in the minutia. And you forget at times, um, and I'm thinking of another example that, that affects you as well. But you forget at times that getting mired in some of those tough days and, you know, the people that are really at you all the time, that the majority of residents in your community don't know any of it. And they are the people that we are ultimately serving. They make up the grand, uh, percentage of, of what we do and why we're doing it. And when they're not calling, when those sort of regular people aren't calling and emailing and complaining, that maybe we're doing something right. But what you did was bring to them a positivity about the community to make them proud of it and to make them see the things that were going on. And we weren't very good at that. We weren't very good at sharing, even when there were good things going on. They kind of only knew about the bad a lot of the times. And there was a lot of bad for quite some time. So, yeah, you know, a lot of people said things that I think we all kind of said similar things. You came into a tough, tough time, beginning of the budget season, um, one of the biggest town meetings, I think, certainly I will ever see. Um, very contentious articles, the whole nine yards. Um, you have ramped up so quickly, uh, in multiple areas that you hadn't done anything in ever before. I, I have been very impressed by that. I really think that you have been an asset to us. So I think it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
The only problem now is all these initiatives that you've started and the festivals and everything else.
Balls in the air.
We kind of got to keep that.
Well, thank you all. I appreciate it a lot. It's been fun. Thank you.
Official, I'm very happy with you too. You're a smart man.
Thank you. Thank you.
We could finally move on. This will not be on the next agenda for a change. Are you sure? No. No, something might come up.
Never mind.
Next, under old business, DCR Ware River Watershed Advisory Committee meeting update.
Yes, uh, real brief, as, as you know, at the last meeting I had to depart at, uh, six forty to attend the OCAM, oh, excuse me, the Hubbardston, uh, select board meeting. I have, uh, met with the boards of Berry, Hubbardston and OCAM regarding the proposed, some of the proposed changes, uh, from DCR regarding the prison camps of the Ware River Watershed. And I'm pleased to, uh, say that since we have signed our position paper, uh, all towns that are included in the prison camps, the Ware River Watershed have signed on to similar worded, uh, positions, saying that, uh, they too oppose uh, any changes to, uh, road access to the public land in there. So that's the update. Just wanted to bring the board, uh, up to speed that all four towns have signed on to a very similarly worded position statement regarding the prison camps. The, uh, continuation meeting, as you know, uh, is scheduled for March nineteenth at seven PM at the Quavon High School in Berry. Um, the first meeting here at the large meeting room in the library was insufficient to, uh, hold, uh, two hundred and fifty to three hundred plus people that are in there. So, uh, it's a public meeting. We encourage the public to go. And the takeaway from, uh, this is that at least one representative from each of the four boards will have committed to being present at the March nineteenth meeting. And some of the boards have said that all the members would be there. So I would encourage all of you, uh, peers to, uh, consider coming to that meeting and, and sitting together during that very important meeting in there. So, uh, and that's the update. So we won't meet until the DCR meeting. And I'll give you a, uh, an update. If you can't make that meeting, I'll give you an update on how it went.
Oh, great job on that, Jeff.
Thank you.
I know you've been working hard on the, getting the towns rallied up.
Thank you. And, uh, the petition that's been going, going around, we're well over two thousand signatures, citizen signatures on that. And, uh, they'll be presented accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is yours as well. Moses Howe.
Um, the Moses Howe, as you recall, that we've, uh, agreed to initiate a, uh, public recognition, a town recognition for, uh, public service annually called the Moses Howe without the E in there. Uh, I am working on a plaque, some sort of a perpetual plaque that would stay stagnant. And then the years would, uh, you know, you would put the little brass, brass things on there. I did find a nice piece of plank in Hardwick, um, that through this, this bar that they're, they're building out there, they, they built a, uh, custom bar and they said, yeah, they got a piece that they can cut off for me. And I found a guy in Holden who can laser etch in there. So I have some designs that, uh, if anyone's interested, that, uh, I might have laser etched onto this old historic plank in there. So, uh, hope to have some, something to present for the Moses Howe Physical Award. Uh, that being said, if we were to, to present such an award at the May fifteenth, Moses Howe night in there, uh, I think it would be reasonable to set a deadline, maybe one month before, for nominations to be coming into the board that we can, uh, vote on. So maybe, uh, whatever, two meetings before the fifteenth of May. Deadlines for submissions and the board's vote to designate who the recipient would be.
Do we have like a submission form?
No. Since we are the, uh, entity that decides and anyone can nominate. No, since we are the entity that decides, and anyone can nominate, I would, be an email, anything in writing, it should be in writing.
I would just, like, just to get a little background, so that we can speak to it at the award, what I've seen other communities do is like a simple format of, you know, what makes this person, you know, why are you nominating this person, what have they done in the community, what does it mean to you, just so we have a little bit of background, it might be helpful.
The two meetings, two meetings before the 15th would be April 20th.
So I would ask that we have our, put a deadline for nominations and decision to be compiled on April 20th.
Actually, well, you want the deadline to not be that day, right, so if you want, you make it the Friday before, which is the 17th.
We have the weekend to review the material.
Okay. Thank you, and then if I could, just do a follow-up on the May 15th Moses Howe evening, I have made some arrangements, and I've spoken with the Fire Brigade for their half of the ceremony, the first half would be on the old burial grounds, similar to what we had last year, I have met with a group of cannoneers, canon people from Hardwick, they have licenses, and they would like to do, they do like ceremony, where they actually, they have shot ashes out in ceremonies type of thing, but they would do a, like a canon salute for us, I think, in period garb, for the right side, I think that would be very interesting if we can get it out there.
I just can't believe there are people that do that.
Oh, yeah, they have to have the licenses.
And that you found them.
I spoke to, well, when you talk to, how do we take this to the next level, like, oh, there's a guy, he's right there in Hardwick, they own the bar, we can get the piece of the bar, but, yeah, they're old timers, they're, what was it, a selectman, a justice of the peace, he's a constable, I mean, so they all, they check all the boxes, and they're a great bunch of guys, so they are very interested in coming out, I spoke to the fire chief, there's a permit process, he's on board with that, it would be a 2,000-pound cannon, Mosio's Garage would take it out with the flatbed, and we scoped out the area, there is a piece of.
Get everybody's face.
There is a piece of flattereth in the old burial grounds, that would be perfect, aim it towards Dev Row, it would be a ceremony thing, but anyways, that's not the good part, I don't think it's too flammable, Joe. We've gotta move it up for the Musketeers. On the left side, so after the ceremony, we're gonna go over to the fire barn in there with the pouring license that the board approved, I have a band coming, the Otters, which is a local darlings, they're donating their time, a free band, gonna come up, so as soon as we're done with the ceremony, probably around 6 o'clock, the Otters are gonna play right in front of the, we have the doors open, cleaned out, they have the La France firetruck out of there, so you could dance maybe inside, I'm gonna hopefully meet with the Fire Brigade seniors, elders at the tavern right after this to try to talk about some.
So, just to recap, for those at home that want the quick snippet, like the Down and Dirty?
Yeah, Down and Dirty.
There's gonna be drinking, we're gonna fire a cannon, and there'll be free music.
Free music, and then hot dogs and hamburgers, and hot dogs, hamburgers.
And it's a Friday.
On a Friday night, and the next day is, the next day is the 5K run.
Yeah.
So, if you get your hangy on, you're gonna have a tough time.
Oh, my gosh.
Winning the thing, but anyways.
Speaking of minutia, Mike, can you make a note?
Yeah.
We need to somehow issue a statement that there will be a very large noise that evening, because I think we all know how social media can be, even, yeah, even the work.
The statement has to read that we're firing a cannon.
Well, whatever, but, I mean, even at Devon's, they were doing munitions this past week, and people were.
Cannons.
Cannons, or multiple?
Cannons, sorry.
But, yeah, so signage would be the thing, maybe Joe, maybe Joe, if you could deviate from your rule of the movable billboard, maybe we'd get some LED use leading up to that, but, yeah, I'm gonna look at some sort of a banner, but the idea behind this, and it's not like, hey, we'll just have a party, there have been a couple of meetings with the Fire Brigade, the Fire Brigade is looking for a fundraiser to try to sell their bricks, the bricks have been laid in there, these are memorial bricks in there, and they seem to have come to the end of the road, they've exhausted all means on trying to sell these bricks, and they're up to $250 for, you know, a family brick in there, but I don't think of a better way than to have a nice, respectful community concert in there, pouring license, some hot dogs, hamburgers, and then to highlight, hey, this is the memorial brick in here, and they have a way now that they can do the smart cube there to take your credit card.
The square.
The square, the square, whatever, okay.
We're going from cannons to technology.
The technology, I think that's probably the best that we can do for the Fire Brigade to try to sell some of their bricks and.
Great.
The ACO.
Yeah.
To move the animals, yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 get the animals out of there.
This is what goes through.
It's going off.
Put mine in their crates, I don't know.
Give you a couple of months' warning here.
No, it's absolutely.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, just real quick, the Moses Howe Award, who is eligible to nominate people?
Anybody, right, that's what we voted on.
Yep.
Anyone that can make a nomination, and it could be for anybody in public service.
Right.
We didn't specify that, it could be, it's excellence in public service.
We're not firing a cannon for somebody from Holden.
They wouldn't get a cannon salute for me.
It says, the eligibility requirements that we passed at the last meeting said either Rutland resident or town employee.
Got it.
I mean, that's the intent, I would think, it would be a public servant.
Yeah.
As Moses was.
Yeah.
Okay.
So our employees would just be the only people from out of town that are eligible.
I don't think so.
Oh, okay, I see what, yeah, that would make sense.
Budget.
Yeah, it looks, just from what I'm seeing here, it appears my staff had a miscommunication with what I said, and I think they took the full budget and gave us each page of it.
Yeah.
I can tell you that we are still having our regular meetings with the Finance Committee on Thursday evenings, our current deficit number is $369,387.55.
And that's inclusive of our free cash policy, so $150,000 has already been put towards.
Correct, and that is also inclusive of removing any 2% colas that we had for non-union employees, and I also took back the raise that is in my contract, because I felt that I'm not allotting for the other employees for getting a raise, that I'm waiving mine.
Wait a second.
Margaret did that, and then she left.
Yeah.
Just saying.
Okay. That's not a good practice either.
Thank you. But I've flatlined my salary as well, but either way, I have been, over the next two and a half weeks, scheduling one-on-one meetings with the department heads to go over everything further, Joe and I just had ours today, and we, like I said, we are ongoing with the Finance Committee, the full budget is in your Google Drives, so you will be able to see that there.
Thank you.
And I can send it to your Select Board emails as well, which I was aware of a password issue that happened, that's all been rectified, so it should all be sent now.
Did it?
Everyone's.
If, when you're meeting with the department heads, and there are cuts to capital requests, can we make sure to touch base with CIPC to make sure those recommendations won't clash?
There actually currently is no capital in there, because those were the first things that were cut, all the capital requests are being put through free cash.
We've never typically been able to.
We tried to last year, we tried to put a cruiser in the budget, but then that was switched, but there are.
Okay.
Many years.
Yeah, and the water and sewer budget, but those haven't been finalized yet, this is just general fund. Yeah, this is just general fund.
Is it okay to put our FinCom member in attendance on the spot, how are the meetings going, Karen?
So far, so good.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
We've been getting what we've been asking for, so that's good.
All right.
Yep.
Good.
And again, the board is posted throughout town meeting season, Thursday night as well as was requested.
So the school committee is meeting as well, right now, concurrently to us, and they are being presented the budget, I, it's hard to imagine that they're going to cut it, so I think that number is the number. Just FYI.
Was it five and a half?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yep.
They do have, I think, something like 1.2 million in their E and D, if we're putting $150,000 of our free cash towards our budget to help balance it, it would be helpful if they would consider that, but something to talk about later, it doesn't change what they would vote tonight, if they're voting tonight. All right, thank you, did anybody have any specific budget questions from the last time we got the big spreadsheet, the multi-page, nothing yet, okay. All right, new business, Anita, yay, here we are, we have a town meeting and town election calendars.
Town meeting is actually more yours.
Yep. Would you like to talk about both, though, since?
The calendar you see here in front of you, would have the board have a motion tonight to open the warrant effective immediately, with a closing date and time of Friday, April 3rd at 12:00 noon, the meeting is scheduled to take place on Saturday, March 9th, 2020, per.
May 9th.
May 9th, whatever I just said, don't, yeah, I don't even notice it.
Not tonight.
Oh, no, actually, that's why I said it, Saturday, May 9th, 2020, with the special happening at 6:00, and the annual happening at 7:00 per our bylaws, again, next on the list, how this works, anything that's shaded is a regularly scheduled board meeting, anything that's not shaded is not a regularly scheduled board meeting, warrant would close on Friday, April 3rd at noon, the board would have its first review of all articles submitted on Monday, April 6th, at their regularly scheduled 6:00 meeting, Friday, April 17th would be the last day to register to vote at the annual town meeting, or to take, to vote at the town meeting or the election, Tuesday, April 21st would be the review of the articles that were submitted at the regular 6:00 PM meeting, that's on a Tuesday, because Monday, the 20th is Patriots Day, Friday, April 24th would be the, is what we are having as the deadline to post the warrants, we do have 14 days prior, which is that denoted there, that gives us three days wiggle room, Monday, the 4th would be the final review of the warrant articles, it'd mainly be the motions at that point, with Saturday, the board convening at 5:00, the Finance Committee at 5:30, the special at 6:00, the annual at 7:00, all at Glenwood, and then Monday, the 11th, would be the annual town election from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, we booked Glenwood Elementary School back in December for the meeting, so that is taken care of, and we have it booked starting at 4:00 PM and going till midnight, hopefully we don't have to go that late, but we have it if we need it.
Looking at you, Peter.
And there were some issues last year about confusion with time for setup being part of the reservation, so we went up to, we may have gone 3:30, but at least 4:00, to make sure that we had time there to set up everything.
Great.
Questions?
So, what we need tonight is a motion to open the warrant with the closed date of Friday, April 3rd at 2020, a motion to accept this calendar, and a motion to set the town election schedule, right, Anita? Thank you.
Make a motion that we open the warrant this evening for the annual town meeting to close on Friday, April 3rd, 2020.
It's noon.
12:00 noon.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next.
Motion to accept the calendar as proposed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the election.
Motion to.
Accept the calendar as proposed.
The opening time for Monday, the 11th.
Okay, motion to set the opening time for the annual town election, Monday, May 11th, for 7:00 AM to close at 8:00 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the warrant is open, off we go, you will note, I actually think you might not note, on the most updated agenda, which got changed at 9:15 this morning, a revision, we added two things, one of which we've already gone through, which was the coronavirus update, because of the time sensitivity of it as things change, the second is, we've just received resignation.
We have two, one from Anthony Defonso, who was a member of our school committee, effective immediately, well, as of last Friday, he has resigned from his term on the school committee, Anita, this would be something that would have to go on the ballot for the May 11th meeting.
You could appoint somebody to, until May, if you chose.
Well, I mean, we can't do it tonight, and the school committee votes tonight, so, I mean, is there really a point to doing that, right?
I mean, there's a lot of.
I know somebody that would be interested.
Yeah, there's a lot of movement at the school committee in these next few weeks as the town sort of solidified their numbers, so it's not the worst thing in the world, we have not had a full seated committee in attendance at all of their meetings for quite some time, many months, I think just.
We'll have to add that, tomorrow we'll add it to the available seats for.
For nomination papers.
Papers, because it'll be a second one-year seat, because his term expires.
Next year?
2021.
So.
So instead of just one, one-year seat, on what you said, there'll be two.
So we were not, I thought we would appoint until the seat runs up?
Yeah.
No?
Could at your next meeting.
So what?
Not until the seat runs out, just until.
Till the election.
Till the next election.
Yeah, so the gentleman who we just appointed to the school committee as well, he's taking papers out, because he will have to run this time as well, so what accepting this resignation would do would be, would be, one, allow us to advertise for the interim seat, and two, allow Anita to put it on the ballot before we go out to print, and allow the interested people to take out nomination papers before we get the deadline, which is?
The 23rd.
The 23rd.
Till 5th, yeah.
March.
Of March.
Thank you.
Not just me, so all those things are contingent upon the board accepting this resignation.
Motion to accept the resignation is written.
I want to say, we just bumped today on the website, and we're looking for a better spot to put community, I mean, board and committee vacancies, because it's on your page, but there's a little connect button on the homepage, meaning to connect with the town, things like that, so we've added vacancies there, but I think I need boards to review and let me know what are really current vacancies.
Thank you, I have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye. One recusal, he's irrelevant.
We have a second resignation that came in as well, from Lindsay DeMers, who was a member of our ad hoc bylaw committee, if you remember, the charge of the ad hoc bylaw committee was that they will remain ad hoc until the bylaws are voted on by town meeting, at which case it will then transition until the seated bylaw committee that town meeting passed recently, she's moved to a different community, and thus needs to resign from her seat for the bylaw that says you have to be a town resident.
And we don't have to fill that.
Technically, no, it allows us to advertise it if we accept it, but we don't have to fill it.
Motion to accept resignation is written. Second.
With regrets, I believe she was an asset to you.
Yes, she was, she was one of the two attorneys on the committee.
A loss, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you both for your service.
Yes. Did you want an appointment to your ad hoc committee for the next, hopefully, six weeks?
I'm not sure that goes away in six weeks.
Agreed.
Last answer is probably yes.
Okay.
It's better to have, to find someone to fill the seat than to leave it empty.
So we're advertising for both of them?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Correspondence?
We have our annual assessment letter that the board was copied on, it initially gets sent to the Board of Assessors for our assessments for our membership as in, in the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, it's based off of per capita numbers, Rutland's assessment for FY '21 will be $2,341.20, that comes out of the Planning Board Administrative Account, not out of the general fund.
And do we have to pay it?
Yes.
What happens if we don't pay it?
I have no idea, it's our assessment through our Regional Planning Commission stuff, so I don't know.
It's like the lowest one here, next to Warren.
Yeah. I mean, I just don't like funding a private entity that is exempt from procurement regulations for no other reason than that it was created legislatively.
What's the option?
There isn't one.
Yeah, this is just a notification, in fact, it's not even something in the purview of this board, it's under the Planning Board, because they pay for it out of their permit fees, but it gets copied to this board, and so, since it was correspondence with this board, that's why it's on the agenda here.
Thank you. Is there any other business to come before the board, Harry Nunn, take a motion adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
So they could.
All in favor?
Aye.